Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. The meeting held April 25th and May 4th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second. I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. We do have one board member calling in. That's Board Member Baker. So unless there is any not unanimous votes, we'll just do the votes this way until that time frame. Okay. We didn't have anybody signed up to address the board. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. On to the good news report.
Good evening. This evening, we are pleased to welcome the admin team from Annie Sullivan Elementary. They are the school spotlight this month, and Nikki Dewan, it's a pair of Nickys, so Nikki Dewan and Nikki Karst are here to share about the programs in their building that make Annie Sullivan Elementary unique.
Hello. It is an honor and privilege to share about Annie Sullivan today. It is a collaborative effort between our teachers, our EAs, our custodians, our volunteers, our our ELL team, our special education team, our SIPs teachers, and it has become a beautiful place. Our motto is "We Lead to Succeed." Annie Sullivan is a leader in me school. The Leader in Me focuses on the seven habits of highly effective people to help students have ownership of their character and their choices that they make. Our mission is together, we will build a nurturing community committed to the academic success of each student. At Annie Sullivan, we have 546 students, and this is the demographics. I was trying to make it very pretty with all the colors, but it didn't fix my numbers. So black is 32%, white is 22%, Asian is 18%, Hispanic is 17%, two or more races is 7%, and Native American is 5%.
One of the components that makes Annie Sullivan so unique is our large population of English learners. We have 254 English learners at Annie Sullivan. We pride ourselves in mastering those English learner instructional strategies within the classroom. Currently, we have 24 languages spoken within our building. We have, some of the major languages are Dinka, Nepali, Creole, Bosnian, Arabic, Spanish, Swahili, Kunama, Lao, Oromo. What else do I see up there? Russian. Those are just to name a few. Karen, if you can see up there, there's many, many languages, and hopefully you can hear hello in many languages. It was louder than we thought it was going to. And every year, we take the WEADA access test, and that's taken in February. So we were actually able to take that in 1920, in the year 1920, before we went on our 19, right, not in the year 1920. We were able to take it before COVID, before we went home. So I'm going to explain those subtests. Speaking, that was one of the subtests under the composite score is what we look at when we, when our kids are dismissed from EL. We want that to be at a five. That's when they are able to be dismissed from EL services. And every year, the goal for EL students is that every student makes .5 growth. So in speaking, for example, in 2019, 2020, 27% of our students grew in that .5 growth. In the next year, 41% grew. So you can see that, how much we were really focusing on those instructional strategies within the classroom. The next area is listening. Only 10% of our students grew in that .5, grew .5 growth. The next year was 33%, huge growth. Writing, very, very difficult for EL students, 16%. We got that up to 59% the following year. Reading, 12% up to 59%. And then that composite growth, 11% up to 56%. So every year, we've seen, in those two years, we saw that huge growth. We're anxious to put our scores together. We have them back, but we just haven't analyzed them yet. So we're excited. When Nikki and I go into the classrooms, those are things that we look at when we try to get in once a month to every classroom, both of us, and look for those. Look fours are the visuals. What are our teachers doing in the classroom to help support those EL learners? Visuals and background knowledge. Are they talking about the background that maybe our EL students don't have, that we kind of assume that every student has? Visuals, background knowledge, and student talk. Not just those one-word responses, but answering the question by using components that were in the question that the teacher answered. Those are just pieces that we were looking for, and our teachers, it's not a surprise, they know what we're looking for, and they do an excellent job of prompting our students to make sure that they're doing the things that we're asking.
Okay. Another thing that makes Annie Sullivan special is we like to celebrate. So this year, we had a great celebration. We were the number one in growth in Sioux Falls for all of the elementaries from fall to winter. I'm looking forward to looking at our data this spring to see where we are. And to celebrate, we had a special breakfast with those highest-growth students in the area of math and the area of reading, and they really enjoyed that special time with us as principals. And then we also had a wonderful celebration of having a mariachi band serenade our students at lunch. And so this is just a short little clip. There it is. Okay. Another thing that we implemented this year that has been really fun is to help our students know the graduating class that they will be at the end of high school.
So, Annie Sullivan, here in Tennessee, in EL year! Three, four, three, four, three, two, three, two, three, 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 two. Three, two, three, two, three, 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 two. Three, one, three, one, three, two, three, two, three, one. Three, zero, three, zero, three, two, three, two, three, zero.
Y E L L, everybody go!
Two, nine, two, nine, two, 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 nine.
We tried to do that all together in the gym. It did not go as well. We also do a parent university, and we've tweaked it a little bit in the last few years. We did three sessions in the fall and three sessions in the spring. And the three sessions were, one was in Nepali, one was in Spanish, and then this last one, we did in Swahili and Dinka. So we have those interpreters present. And we talk about Leader in Me and what those components are. And then we talk about technology boundaries and routines and nutrition. And those last few are so important. Our families have felt such a disconnect because they're, in their culture, that's not, they don't understand it as much, and our kids are taking advantage of them. So we're teaching them, it's okay to say no. It's okay to take those things and to set those boundaries with your kids. And sometimes they'll tell them, oh, we don't have school tomorrow. And we call, like, where are they at? Well, they said we don't have school. So just letting parents know, it's okay to tell them no. It's okay if they're mad at you. So just having those opportunities to meet with parents and having them come into school. These parent universities have been very beneficial. Then we talk about the seven habits. So here's a quick video about.
Habit one, be proactive. I'm in charge of my life.
Habit two.
Begin with the end in mind. Make a plan.
Habit three, put first things first. Word first, then play.
Habit four, think, win, win. Everybody wins.
Habit five, see first to understand, then to be understood.
Habit six, synergize. Together is better.
Habit seven, sharpen the saw. Take care of yourself.
The impact of the seven habits on our students, this is our second year of doing the Leader in Me program. Students are able to have that common language about ownership of their actions, and also, as you heard on the video, the common language of the seven habits. Students have a strong sense of belonging, and they are happy, and they feel a part of our school community. Students set their own academic goals and identify steps to reach those goals. They also learn how to track their progress. We have leadership portfolios that each of our students have to track those goals and find out what their lead measures are to get to the end. And it's showing in our data that it's working. Students are learning social etiquette in order to act within culturally respectful norms. So those are the common manners that we teach our children. So we're teaching our students those. So this is our Leader in Me results, and we had a coaching session with our Leader in Me coach today, and she was ecstatic. She was like, just so happy because she has not seen these kind of results in one year from any other school. So we're very proud. And I'm proud of our staff, and they're all collectively working together for the school. And as you can see on the student leadership, we had, our score was 58 last spring, this spring it's 71. So we have a Leader in Me survey that we do with our parents, our staff, and our students. And then it gets collected into the survey results, and then we analyze it as a team. And our coach works with us to find out those areas to set goals for next year. So we went from needs improvement to moderately effective in all three areas, which was really exciting because, as you can see in that social etiquette piece, we gained 15, like, that is amazing that, you know, we made that much growth. 15 points, she said, doesn't normally happen. And we've seen it in our classrooms and in our hallways with our students.
And we got a few testimonials from parents. As a mother, I have had students at Annie Sullivan for 16 years. I without a doubt have seen the utmost care, compassion, and education always being first. My children don't just exist at Annie, they thrive. The students are truly loved by staff. I like everything about Annie Sullivan Elementary because, as a parent, we are able to know how our children are doing through conferences. Sometimes what doesn't get covered in conferences, teachers communicate through letters and phone calls, which is very positive. So there's a couple comments we got from families. Do you have any questions for us?
I got the experience firsthand. I know, I should remember, I came with promising futures. Only had the little celebration. And when I walked in the door, I could feel it. I could feel the positive attitude by you two, which I think you've done a wonderful job. And the staff that I visited with the kids, and I just, I mean, it was like, just one of those things. I just walked in the door, and it was like, wow, there's something happening here. And it was great. And I was happy to see the improvement, and I was really, I was really opened my mind about what's going on there and how it's doing. So I think you're doing an outstanding job, and I appreciate it.
Same. And the other thing, when you first walk in the door, you have the behavioral numbers and how they've improved. And I think that's also attributed to the Leader in Me program and how those have improved over the years. So I just, anything we can do to help all of those issues that we have in our schools is just wonderful. So thank you for implementing this and doing this with all the family. I know it's additional work for you, but it's great. And also communicating with the parents, because, you know, when we have all the language issues and barriers, it's how do we make sure we're communicating with those families so they know what is going on and what they can do to help their students in our school? So thank you for taking those exercises to do that.
I was going to add, I know at some of the community cafes, we really heard a lot from some of our very different cultural families about how they just feel that disconnect you guys talked about. And so I love the fact that you're not just talking about academic things during your parent university, but there's many people who are new to this environment in general. And schools are very different in other countries. The expectations of parents are very different about who comes in school, who doesn't, who isn't allowed in school, and how do you participate? And so I think just giving that information is so helpful to them. I can remember going to a session at one of our National School Board events and listening to them talk about graduation rates. And one of the biggest impacts that a school had seen is when they connected their students to their graduation. And so as I was watching that amazing video, it brought me back to how important that is for them to realize, like, that's my number, and I want to stay on track. And when you give them that number as a kindergartner, and you reinforce that every single year, and they get to see the cheerleaders, for example, who look like them, be able to see them being excited about that, I can only imagine the impact that that's going to have long-term on them as they continue through their years. So I loved that. I loved all your videos. They're awesome. But that one really stuck out to me about just, you know, empowering them to see the end and to know that they work hard, they can get to that specific number that was given to them.
Well, we can't take credit for that. That came from Dr. Saban. She had that great idea. I just put it in place.
That's okay. That's okay.
And what's exciting is I had some students ask what year they'll graduate from college.
Oh, that's awesome. Very cool. So thank you very much. Wonderful report.
I'm going to interject. One of the, one of the best things that I saw when I was out to the school earlier this year is that they've done a really good job of making learning visible and sharing their results, which is not an easy thing to get to, particularly when staff have to be vulnerable and share that with each other. And we do that through PLCs and some other things. They have it posted loud and proud in the hallway. And one of the things that Nikki said that was really good to hear is that students were walking by noticing the progress that classrooms were making, and they've caught on to how good growth feels. And that's really where the magic happens. So commendable. Thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you. That's it. Great. The good news. We don't have two this time. I'll make sure I don't want to skip ahead. No new conflicts of interest were presented, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items nine A through E. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. On to supplemental consent agenda. Items 10A, B, and C are all to Sanford. So do I have a motion to approve those claims to Sanford?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Those are passed with one abstention from Board Member Ryder. Report to the superintendent. First, we have the Special Education. Dr. Fenton.
Good evening, and thank you again for this opportunity to provide an update regarding outcomes and accountability in special education. Our district, we are so fortunate because we believe so strongly in our responsibility and accountability for our infants, toddlers, children, and youth with disabilities. And the Department of Education embraces this obligation and has two primary areas of focus for balancing the outcomes and accountability for students with disabilities. So we will touch tonight on our IDEA compliance or our five-year accountability file review. And if you think back to January, you saw all those big pictures of the file boxes from our review. So we'll talk quickly through that process. And then we have results-driven accountability as well. We have, both of these processes align with our district priorities, and we're focusing on staff excellence, the effective use of resources, academic success, and well-being. Prior to the introduction of results-driven accountability, there was a fairly heavy and substantial emphasis on compliance in special education. But fortunately, we had lots of individuals that realized student outcomes are not directly impacted by that compliance piece. We need to look at a multitude of other factors. So we really saw this effort to bring into balance that procedural compliance with student outcomes. And the result of that is results-driven accountability. Our district serves almost 4,000 students in special education. We truly need to know whether or not what we're doing is actually working for our students. We can't afford to lose any of that valuable instructional time. So this is where RDA enters the accountability process. So this is where RDA enters the accountability process. So what is results-driven accountability? Again, it was driven by the Department of Education and really revised the accountability system for IDEA in special education. It is a continuous improvement process, which is how it really directly aligns with the MTSS framework, our school improvement and all of the other accountability measures that we have in place in the district. And it is a collaboration between our Office of Special Education and the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education. So it's a collaborative effort at the federal level. And what that translates to, and what I really valued this quote, because this really sums up our shared responsibility and our obligation to our students with disabilities. We need to do everything within our power to ensure that all students, including our students with disabilities, receive a high-quality education that prepares them for meaningful opportunities in post-secondary life. So that really is what we are about in our school district. So this again sees the, we see the shift from a primary emphasis of a compliance framework into that true viewing of the outcomes and improving results for our students with disabilities. And we also know that we have to continue to emphasize outcomes, but we still need to obligate ourselves to that compliance with IDEA provisions. So our work with results-driven accountability this year, our multidisciplinary team that gathered in October, identified some goals that we have been focusing on. We want to look at increasing the number of students enrolled with disabilities who are enrolled in higher education a year after graduation. We are focusing on improving reading and math proficiency. We're looking at creating strong professional learning communities in early childhood. And then also general improvement of outcomes for our students in our early childhood programs. So those were goals that were a result of that RDA process. And we know, as I mentioned, student outcomes are essential to monitor, but we can't let go those provisions of IDEA that were obligated because that's where we see those protections for each and every eligible student. So again, that balance comes into play. And we were part of a five-year monitoring process this year that occurred in January. So the Department of Education sent a team out and they were focused on specific indicators. We were looking at the provision of a free, appropriate public education in that least restrictive environment. We were also looking at general supervision. So how are we supporting our staff with child find, effective monitoring transitions? And then finally, we were looking at the, whether or not there was a disproportionate representation of racial and ethnic groups in special education and related services. So that's where the accountability piece comes in. And you can see here that again, every five years, we have that comprehensive visit from the Department of Education, but we have an annual district determination that we complete yearly to ensure that we continue with that compliance component. Our results will be available to the public on the Department of Education website. So that is public information. And some of the priorities that are aligned with RDA and accountability were really reinforcing the work and the journey that we had already started on at the beginning of this school year. So we were really excited. It really validated the direction that we were moving in special education. And some highlights of what we will plan to prioritize and to continue to focus on next year is looking at specially-designed instruction, supporting general and special educators in the general education classroom. We'll be looking at evidence-based interventions, strengthening progress monitoring and data collection, utilizing database problem solving, and then also really focusing on our English learners. So I was really pleased to hear the results at Annie Sullivan. It's one example of those collaborative efforts. So in closing, RDA and accountability are not isolated events. And we're really focused on ensuring that that collaborative process is there. And so we know that this is part of the great work that's underway across the district. We're intertwining multi-tiered systems of support. We're looking at school improvement plans. Our accountability and monitoring in special education, results-driven accountability, it's all part of the bigger system where we are relentlessly focusing on improving outcomes for our students with disabilities. And one last model to show you, again, this is really a great visual of that integrated model and framework within which RDA and accountability exist and play that important role. Our district priorities around the edge of this graphic are what drive our work. And MTSS essential elements are found within the inner circle. Those are the building blocks for the system that are really leading us forward as we again pursue really strong outcomes for all of our students, including our students with disabilities. So I will pause there and again, ask that you acknowledge the outcomes and accountability report.
Well, thank you to you and your team for all you do. That department oversees about the sixth largest school district in the state of South Dakota. If you just take those students alone. And obviously we have range of what needs and what their needs and what their issues, we have to deal with them. So thank you for all you do for those families and those students because we love having them in our district and love to be able to serve them. So I really appreciate all you do.
We have a wonderful team. Thank you.
I have a question. So because I was at one time a pseudo administrator, I got to sit down a lot of IEPs. And for me, it's amazing, the paperwork that has to be done. Obviously, I've never taught, you know, I don't have a clue about what it takes or what it takes to be accountable or what are required. Have they lessened or narrowed down some of those forms? And because those poor people, I mean, they're, it's a full-time job just keeping up with the forms.
The paperwork obligation has been, that actually was one of the top factors when special educators were interviewed and we were looking at those IDEA compliance factors. And we realized while it is important because that's where we protect the rights of students and outline a detailed plan, but that's not the direct result of those outcomes and those improved outcomes. We know it's bigger than that compliance piece. So this is that effort to balance all of those components. And our online IEP system certainly has been a big introduction of change into the district, but that's intended to really streamline the paperwork process as well. So, and I had great feedback last week at an IEP meeting. A parent said, wow, this is really easy to read. So I took that as a really great, great feedback from a parent's perspective too.
Any questions? Seeing then, do you have a motion to acknowledge the special education?
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We are having acknowledged your report. Thank you very much. Onto the next.
And while Deanne's getting up the slides, we're going to welcome Allison Struck for an update on the activities of the foundation. We heard a little bit from Allison the other night at our retirement recognition banquet. And we just appreciate the work of the foundation and the board that governs the foundation and the work that they continue to do to support our classrooms. We see them kind of as our shoulder partners, is I think a good way to describe what a foundation does. There's often confusion about what is an education foundation. So we appreciate you. Thanks for the update tonight.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. I am here to share information about the Education Foundation. We have four main focus areas. Our Public School Proud Grants, the Talent and Recognition Fund, our Student Success Fund and our Endowment. We are probably most well-known for our Public School Proud Grant Program. Any teacher in the Sioux Falls School District can apply for up to $10,000 to purchase materials that will give students hands-on immersive opportunities. You can see a list of some of the grants that we have funded up on the screen. But if a teacher has dreamt it somewhere along the line, we have probably funded a grant. By the end of this school year, we will award 54 grants to 88 educators totaling $120,000. All three of those marks are a record for the foundation. So that's something that we're celebrating. Since 2008, we have awarded more than 450 grants for a total of about $800,000. When this program started, we capped grants at $1,000 per year per teacher. And then in 2017, the Board of Directors voted to increase that to $10,000 a year. Here are some of the grants that we have funded just within the last few months within the Sioux Falls School District. Our largest grant this year went to Heidi Reynolds at Pettigrew Elementary. This is the second year that she has been using the Seven Mindsets Program. Students and staff learn about compassion, empathy, generosity, kindness. And the teacher started a book club. And they focus on those every day in the classroom and do activities. When Heidi submitted her grant, 100% of the parents wanted to continue the program and 97% of staff members, which was encouraging for us to see. A couple of weeks ago, we awarded a grant to purchase four 3D printers at Rosa Parks Elementary. And we were able to surprise the librarian in the classroom with third graders. So that was, that was a fun one to be in the building. We had three teachers from Robert Frost who are going to be putting regulation stations throughout the building. So when students need a brain break or they need some help with self-regulation, they can go on into the hallway, not be a disruption in the classroom. And hopefully we'll have fewer office referrals. We awarded a $3,000 grant at Whittier to purchase art supplies for an art center. We have garden beds out at Ben Rifle Middle School. And the sixth grade science students were putting them together on Friday. And the teacher emailed me before eight o'clock this morning and said, I had a number of students tell me this is the best day they had at school this year, which we love to hear that too. We awarded two grants at Axstill Park. And one of them is to purchase podcasting equipment for the students at Joe Fox. We still have nine more grants to announce with a few weeks of school left. We'll be in two buildings next week and then one the last week of school. This is a chart that shows our growth in our Public School Proud Grant Program. We have doubled both the number of grants and the overall funding allocation. Through our Talent and Recognition Fund, we try to find ways to support teachers who are just entering the Sioux Falls School District, those who are maybe mid-career and then those who are close to retirement. One way we do that is through our First Time Teacher Grant Program. All first-time, first-year teachers get a $200 grant from the Education Foundation. We awarded 79 of those in August of 2021, which was another record for us. This year, we started the Goodwill Tour. We go into every building and drop off treats for the staff. And then we share information about our grant programs. In August, we provided a hot breakfast to the staff at Ben Rifle and Jefferson as a way to celebrate their new buildings and to kick off the school year. The Sioux Falls School District always offers their host, the Teacher of the Year banquet. And this year, we were able to offer the One American Bank Distinguished Educator Award. So there was a second teacher who also received a cash prize. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week and we celebrated educators going above and beyond on our social media page. In March, we provided a meal for 75 school counselors. And we also funded the Community Resilience Model Training for social workers. This shows the grant in the First Time Teacher Grant Program. This is not something that teachers apply for. The numbers come from HR to all of those zero-experience teachers. And we cut the checks to the buildings and then teachers submit their receipts for reimbursement. I expect that we'll continue to see that upward trend. We'll probably have around 85, 90 or 100 first-time teachers in August. Through the Student Success Fund, we connect students and families in crisis with basic needs. We provide emergency food assistance, gas gift cards, bed bug cream, lice shampoo, feminine hygiene products, city bus passes, GED scholarships through this fund. We also have a shoe voucher program with Stride Right. Our social workers have vouchers that they can give to families and students can get a new pair of tennis shoes or snow boots at Stride Right. Our board recently allocated $14,000 to specifically support our Native American students. We will sponsor the honoring ceremony before graduation, the open house in August and the holiday meal in December. And we collaborate very closely with our school-based social workers for this fund. They're the boots on the ground. They're going into homes, working with our families. And all schools have access to this fund and we trust the social workers to make that determination. Finally, we have an endowment. This was started by a group of retired educators. We draw percentage of the investment income each year. It's usually around 4%. When I started, the balance was about $100,000 and we have grown that to $650,000. Although after today, it probably dropped a little bit. But the growth in our endowment was due in large part to a number of estate gifts that we received. Jean and Connie Neelens raised their daughter in Sioux Falls. She graduated from Washington. When they passed away, they left us $226,000 for our endowment. Harriet Hibbertson taught in Sioux Falls School District. She supported a number of charities and we received a $58,000 donation from her earlier this year. Karen Saxvik taught at Robert Frost. She was instrumental in starting the Reading Recovery Program. Her family set up an endowment in her honor after she passed and they donate the proceeds to our teacher grant program every year. And then we just found out we will receive funds from Sue Scribner's estate to support language arts programming at the middle school level. This just shows the growth in our endowment. What we love about growing this fund is that it provides sustainable, long-term, you know, funding for our programs. We believe that we need to take care of teachers. In order for them to invest in their students, teachers need to feel supported. And we believe that we have opportunities for staff at the beginning of their careers, in the middle and at the end. But we also want to support our students. And through the Student Success Fund, we can try and meet some of those basic needs. So when they get to school, they can be focused and engaged in the classroom. And then we always want to be driving innovation and creativity. And we awarded a grant at Lowell for a teacher to buy 3D printers and the software was free. So one of her students went home and over the course of a couple of days, he had designed 28 different projects. And she had to break it to him that he could only print one because there were 100 other students who needed the 3D printer. But how amazing that a student has free access to the software and just went home and designed. When I visited the science fest at McGovern, the teacher told me that attendance was better on the days when the students were using the robotics kits. And for a lot of the students, it was the only chance they would have to work with $400 equipment. You know, their parents couldn't buy it for them and they can't afford to send them to camps where they would use those kinds of materials. And then at Lincoln High School last year, we awarded a grant. So our RISE students, they started a smoothie business. They created the menu. They purchase all the ingredients. They handle money. They do time management. They clock in and clock out and learn customer service skills. So that's really, we want to teach our students skills that they can use outside of the classroom and when they're furthering their education. And we know that all of these things, whether it's computer programming, problem-solving, critical thinking, communication, all of those skills relate to workforce development. And lastly, I just wanted to thank our Board of Directors. I know that Dr. Zeke and Nan have to be at the school board meeting tonight, but I know Carrie Aaron came and Anthony Peiser. And we just have a very engaged and dedicated board. So I wanted to take a minute to recognize them for all that they do. And that is all I have.
Wow. We luckily, we got to see some of the preview of this at the other night at the recognition banquet. But just to see how much it's grown under your leadership and the board leadership. Thank you so much. It's so awesome for the Sioux Falls School District. And of course, I like get numbers and so forth. So I think it's interesting. So our school, we have 25,000 students. We have one education foundation director, one employee for our whole district to oversee this department. And if you go to the Bishop O'Gorman Schools, they have nine people. They have seven in development and two in their foundation and with 2,400 students. So you're doing the job with nine people, basically. So thank you for what you're doing. You're doing a phenomenal job and we really, really do appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Do you have a motion to acknowledge the Sioux Falls Education Foundation report?
Don't move.
I would move to approve.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That carries. Onto the last report, which is the Continue to Learn Plan update.
Good evening. And I bring to you this evening the Continue to Learn Plan Required Review and Update. That's a requirement we do every six months as part of the requirements of the return to learn. And so I do bring this forward as part of our district priority. And it falls under each one of those areas as we go out and seek out the community feedback. And the information does help us in each one of the areas of academic success while being community engagement and effective use of our resources. The explanation for this, the current Continue to Learn Plan was acknowledged by the school board on August 9th of 2021, prior to the 2122 school year. prior to the 2122 school year, with significant community feedback at that point in time. The plan was then reviewed at our six-month review, December 6th of 2021. It can be at six months or prior to that. And then this report will provide the committee's recommended updates for the required six-month review and update at this time. The summary of updates to the district's plan have been recommended or reviewed by the committee for the board's acknowledgement. And so I'll go through each one of those, the general overview of the changes that occurred throughout this document. On all the pages, we did update, obviously, the school year and the dates and any of the external hyperlinks that were connected to those things, especially like medical or we needed to reference the CDC. We also added in there the notification that all face coverings will still be available to students upon request. On the second page, we are updating the table of contents, and this will be updated once we acknowledge the report this evening. And the page three, the superintendent's message, was updated. On page five, that summary chart that is on page five will be replaced so that we can have something there that will be able to be easily translated into multiple languages. And that'll be updated once this report has been acknowledged later tonight or tomorrow. So that page there, we just really tried to put together a summary that will highlight any things that occurred throughout the entire message, plus to make sure that we inform people about any of the opportunities they have for vaccination or masks or anything of that nature. On page nine, child nutrition protocols reverted to the normal practices. With all these, we kept intact any of the changes that we had. They're just staying on board there in case they're ever needed. But it will return back to the normal practices on page 11. It did have on there the required daily cleaning by teachers and other areas, even some of those things were period by period. That will revert to when needed. But if need be, at any point in time, we can revert back to any of the former plans that we have. Page 12, busing protocols were updated, including the authorization by our parents to show photo ID and sign for those individual students that need that. That really impacts our early childhood and our special education students, but especially early childhood. We did have it at the point in time there where they just had to show the ID. Now we're going back to what's actually required, which is a signature. We were able to suspend that for that short amount of time for the last couple of years. Page 16, medical care was updated for positive cases and testing options so that individuals know where those most recent links are. And then page 19, vaccination information was updated as well. On page 24, we had added additional psychologists to the Sioux Falls School District, so that goes in and supported the educational needs of our students, part of the Ester funds. On page 25 and 26, the removal of the virtual academy option. That was eliminated. As you had heard from the budgetary process, there was less than 40 students involved in that third grade through eighth grade. So that had been eliminated for next year. Page 27, athletics and fine arts participation. That was updated as well and went along with the same similar protocols that we'd use for the busing now or any other activity with athletics and fine arts. Page 28, the employee support information was again updated. And then we moved all the face covering so that it was located on one page so it'd be easy for people to reference. And it was easier also when we did the translations. So that's, that'll be centralized on page number seven. And then the remaining part of that page is 36 to 40. We just updated all that information about the ARP Ester grant funding and where those funds were being utilized. The committee participation on this is the same guiding team that we had from the very beginning with the 18 individuals included, administrators from each of the Continue to Learn planning areas, and then the Sioux Falls Education Association President. In summary, the recommended changes for the 2223 Continue to Learn Plan have been reviewed by the committee and are being presented for your acknowledgement this evening. So the recommendation is to acknowledge the changes to the 2223 Continue to Learn Plan and those updated, or updates as proposed by the Continue to Learn Plan Committee. And I did provide the attachment that was also sent in as attached on the website with all those changes that are redlined. I would stand by for any questions.
Questions for Dr. Mo? And for the public, we'll just be continuing to do this as far as, as long as the Ester funds were being used through 2020.
That is correct. It's going to be for the next two years. And so we'll go through and continually review that and update it every six months. So we'll look at it again in the December date.
Seeing then, do I have a motion for acknowledgement?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That is acknowledged. Onto policies.
So for the policies, just quickly here, we had 14 policies up on our review revise. These were reviewed by the Policy Review Committee. So of these 14 policies, we are recommending, you know, five with no changes. Six of them had just small updated references and small grammatical changes. So then the three remaining ones, I'll just give a brief, a brief summary of what's being changed. Policy GB, GB, we're increasing the dollar amounts related to the insurance coverage for employee personal property. Policy ICA, the small change there would allow for minor calendar changes due to inclement weather and other, you know, minor corrections to the calendar without the need to reconvene the calendar committee. And then finally, policy JJH, that's just an update with the future rotational travel. So with that, I'd ask that you approve the review revision of these policies and their accompanying regulations.
Any other comments from the policy? Any questions?
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the policy revisions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. Sorry, wait. Those are approved. Do you have a motion to move into executive session? Pren 1, 25, 2, pren 4.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will move into executive session.